Okay, good afternoon, everyone. Welcome to the July 17th meeting of the Murphy's Borough Planning Commission. We'll call the meeting to order. We do have a quorum present today. We did not have any public comments registered, so our first item of business will be the consent agenda. Everybody had a chance to review the consent agenda prior to the meeting, so if we have any items you would like removed for further consideration, please state so, and otherwise, we will be ready for a motion.
Chair Jones, I'm going to abstain from voting on items I through L on the consent agenda.
I through L, I, J, K, L. Okay. Carolyn, I'll get that. All right. Any other comments or questions before we're ready for a motion?
So moved second.
We have a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda, Ms. Jacob.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay. Next, we have our GDO section of the agenda. First item there today is the Robert Rose Village West. It's the Vintage Exchange Apartments. It's the initial design review for a 318,500 square foot mixed-use development in four main buildings, zoned PUD and GDO1, located along Robert Rose Drive and Maple Grove Drive. TDK Land LLC is the developer. Mr. Blomley, good afternoon.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair and members of the Planning Commission. Filling in for Mr. Barbie on this one and the next one. He's on vacation, and we hope that he's having a good week off. This is for initial design review for the four buildings with the multifamily component of the TDK development on Robert Rose Drive and Maple Grove Drive. I'm going to pull up the master plan. So, the lot, or the building on the southwest corner of Medical Center Parkway and Robert Rose Drive, the specialty grocery store, is currently under construction. I'm sure you've seen it. They've gone vertical on that. The building along Robert Rose Drive, which was the office building, is in a future phase, so it's not proposed with this site plan. So the four buildings that my cursor is going over right now, that are labeled as A, B, C, and D, are a part of this site plan, as well as the associated parking and site work in the areas adjacent to it. These four buildings are mixed-use buildings with commercial uses on the first floor and multifamily on the upper floors. The plan is consistent with the plan development approval that was granted by the City Council in the fall of 2023. The architecture is generally consistent with the architecture that was a part of the plan development that was approved by council in 2023. There have been some minor tweaks to the architecture that the applicant has been working with staff on, and Mr. Matt Taylor will be presenting both the site layout, which, as I mentioned, is consistent with what you've reviewed before, as well as the architecture. So, just as a reminder, with initial design review, we're looking more at the architecture than the site. If you have any comments for them on the site design, that now would be an appropriate time to mention those, but we're primarily looking at the architecture. And the final site plan review and final design review for the architecture will be back before you next month, we anticipate. So I'd like to invite Mr. Taylor to the lectern and present to you this development.
Thank you, Mr. Blomley. Matt Taylor of SEC. I've got Mr. Ross Bradley and Mr. John David Blankenship, both the TDK, with me as well. And then Gina Emanuel of Centric Architecture is here as well, she can talk a little bit more about the building architecture. As Matthew said, the site layout, really the whole program, is still very consistent with what was approved in the PUD by both the Planning Commission and City Council a few months ago. Most of the roadway infrastructure, I've got to figure out the new one, but the roadway infrastructure along the north side of this is really going in with the specialty grocery that's under construction right now. This project will make an additional connection back out to Robert Rose Drive on the south side, and then a connection kind of into the Belk Loop and the avenue on the west side. And then we will connect to the new private drive that's being built with the grocery. We've got two proposed connections with that. We'll be building all the parking on the south side of this private drive, except for what's immediately around that future office building that fronts on Robert Rose Drive as well. We've got all of our plazas and amenity spaces that we had inside the PRD. We've concentrated a lot of effort on our streetscape plan along the private drive, so that retail is getting that kind of Main Street feel. And then we've also added a dog park and some covered seating areas internal to the parking lot that is actually over and above the PRD or the PUD that we had proposed. As for the architecture. So here is Building A, which is going to be the building that's closest to the avenue. So the upper elevation is what faces our internal private drive, and then the lower elevation would face internal to the property. And in that same building, the upper one would face toward the south, toward the existing apartments, I think that's Everwood, and then the bottom would face toward the avenue or Culvers, toward that general direction. This particular building is the large building kind of in the northwest corner of the project. So the bottom elevation is what's going to have that ground floor retail going to face toward that private drive, and then the other two face internal to the project.
Mr. Taylor, can I ask real quick right there? When we're looking at these retail spaces, the top elevation and then the one at the bottom, they go all the way through, right? We don't have some signage and front entrances that we're looking at on the bottom, and then you could have others, a different business on the interior.
So the bottom elevation here is what's going to, would be the only one of these elevations that would have, well, I say the bottom elevation here, that would be the retail, and then the middle elevation would have retail on that bottom floor. The top elevation is actually facing internal to the courtyard, and so that bottom floor is going to have residential that's looking in toward the pool and amenity space.
Oh, so that's a different building.
It's the same building, it's just a different angle.
The backside.
Yes, ma'am. And so if you look down at kind of the key code in the bottom right-hand corner, see that gray box? And then the architect has put arrows to point how we're viewing that right there. And so that bottom, the bottom view is looking kind of from what used to be Peter D's, was it McAllister's now, toward the site. And then the top view is if you're standing basically at the pool in that central courtyard and looking kind of toward where Culvers is today.
Mr. Taylor.
So the business does not go front to back? The business on the backside, those are more apartments on the first floor?
Well, let me, so.
You know what I'm asking.
Yeah, can you zoom in a little bit?
Am I not asking the question correctly? Do y'all understand what I'm saying?
I understand what you're saying.
Yeah.
It's just kind of a general, I just wondered if there's business all the way around?
So if you, do you see that, ma'am? So this view right here, so if you're looking at the street, that is what this ground floor is. So that is this one, whereas the top one, we're looking at this side. So it's two different, so the businesses are going to be associated here. This over here becomes all residential on this side.
So if I'm at the pool, can I walk into the business under B2? Or do I have to walk around to the front of the building?
Let me introduce myself. Ross Bradley, TDK, 1610 South Church Street. So to answer your question, yes and no. Some sections you can.
Okay.
So, for example, in this A2 here, the commercial basically encompasses all the way to the dotted line. So you could access the commercial from the front or from the rear or from the side. On the B2, this front section only covers the front half of the building.
Okay.
Then as you get over here, we've got our clubhouse in the very center, and then as you get over here, we're talking to an ice cream shop and a coffee shop back here. So you could actually come through the coffee shop and then back out to this courtyard and then into this coffee, into this ice cream shop. The C1, that entire area is commercial.
Okay.
So everything that's to the dash line.
Okay.
So one of the big changes we had initially when we came through, I think we had 13,000 square feet of commercial, we've changed that to over, just over 17,000. So that was a change. When we did the specialty grocery that we brought a few months ago, we had, we saw some additional demand that came to our commercial with that tenant being in there. So we've added a little bit more than what we originally talked about.
Okay.
So which of these buildings is y'all's office building?
So it's actually not a part of this site. It would be to that parcel directly behind the specialty grocery.
Okay.
So that'll be the next phase.
Next phase. Okay. That was just a curiosity question on whether it was all commercial on the whole first floor or just like front-facing.
From what you're going to see from the street, it's going to look like all commercial. There's some areas where it just didn't make sense because of the way you kind of positioned the building.
Okay. Thank you. Appreciate it. Sorry, Mr. Taylor.
No, ma'am.
Interrupted your train of thought.
That's more of the same building, and then this is the building that's going to be kind of at the northeast corner. So again, this lower view, this ground floor here is going to be the retail, and then as you turn that corner here, that would be some of the ground floor retail. And then this would be the rear building, which is going to be entirely residential. And this would, all the materials here are consistent between each of the buildings. So that's a mix of brick and fiber cement board, a little bit of metal trim in there, so an aluminum storefront. All that's very consistent with the PRD. And then this is just showing our trash enclosure toward the rear of the site. Otherwise, I'll be happy to answer any questions. And I think that we had a material board delivered. I don't necessarily see it, but I think it was delivered with the initial submittal.
Yeah, it's up in Brad's office. I forgot to retrieve it.
I understand.
I got it.
All right, very nice. Thank you, Mr. Taylor. Any questions for Mr. Taylor? Any other questions, suggestions, comments regarding the initial design review for this project?
I think it looks good.
Yeah.
If there are no questions, I move for approval subject to all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Haverwater.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. All right, thank you very much. And moving on to Item B, The Fountains at Gateway, Phase 2A is initial design review for 193,040 square foot mixed-juice building on 5.12 acres, zoned PUD and GDO3, located along Medical Center Parkway. Hearthstone Properties LLC is the developer. Mr. Blomley.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our next item under the Gateway Design Overlay District portion of the agenda is for Phase 2A of The Fountains at Gateway. You'll recall that just several months ago, this came through the Planning Commission and City Council for rezoning to a planned unit development. It's also, of course, located in the Gateway Design Overlay District number three. One of the primary reasons for the rezoning, if you recall, was the fact that they needed to keep, the developer needed to keep certain phases in separate ownerships for financing purposes, and as we know, lot lines create expectations with regards to parking, landscaping, and so the plan development was a way to allow him to keep, to keep the phases on separate parcels, separate lots of record. So Mr. Grabey and Hearthstone have acquired this flag lot that's shown on the map before you, and so they're looking to move forward with Phase 2A. Phase 2A is consistent with the plan development that was approved by Planning Commission and Council. The architecture that's in the plans before you is nearly identical to the elevations that were included in the pattern book earlier this year. Just as a reminder, this is a five-story building. The first floor will have retail and office on the first floor. The second floor will have office. The third floor will have residential, fourth floor residential, and fifth floor residential as well, for a total of, I believe, 52 or 53 dwelling units in this building. There will also be parking underneath this building, as well as a parking deck directly adjacent to the building. As I mentioned, it's consistent with the plan development that was approved, and so if there are no questions for me, I'll invite Mr. Tyler Thayer with Paradigm to come up and present the site and the proposed architecture.
Hello, thank you. My name is Tyler Thayer with Paradigm Studio, 761 Old Hickory Boulevard in Brentwood, Tennessee. It's a pleasure to be back before you guys today, and thank you for having us. I think, I don't know if it needs to switch over to this computer or not. Am I supposed to drive? Oh, it is. Okay, now it is. Let's see, I think I can, I was going to zoom in a little bit. So this is the project, and this site plan submittal is limited in scope from the Phase 2 that was presented and approved during the PUD process. As was mentioned just a few minutes ago, this site plan includes the building, which is a five-story building plus basement, plus a precast garage, which is aligned with the surface of the parking, so it's actually subterranean. So if you look here, and I'll zoom in a little bit better, just to make sure we understand the scope, the site plan outlines the scope really well. We'll be extending the drive up from the, if you're familiar with the site, the lawn, kind of the head of the lawn, the north of the lawn, down over towards the property line, and then back down to Carl Adams Jr. to make that connection. And then everything, I'll point here, there's a slight retaining wall here, and we stop the project here, and we're going to build all the way back, and then from this dark ramp that you see, and then the concrete pattern, that is the subterranean parking garage, which will be a precast garage, it'll be subterranean. The remainder of the space to the front of the site, which is south, the closest, closer elements to Medical Center Parkway, are Phase 2B, what we're referring to, Phase 2B and 2C, which are two other projects. That will remain a graded slope with grass until that project, the owner, Scott Grabey, hopes that'll be kind of sequential to this, but we are planning to leave that until Phase 2B or 2C. And then the remainder of this Carl Adams Jr. connection and the existing drive that's kind of going across will be done along with that boutique hotel that's in that scope of work, so that during construction, that doesn't get further damaged. So that's why we stopped that construction there. So that's the scope of work. And then the sidewalks for egress all the way around the building and any of the landscape that is associated with that is all in that scope. And then the building has remained most, I think, unchanged since our submittal with the PUD, so when you approved that, the building is the same. But brief recap, retail and office on the first floor, office on the second floor, residential condominiums on the second, or sorry, the third, fourth, and fifth floor. And then the subterranean on the elevations, if you look at this, it's not, it's subterranean, so there's no brick and those kind of things, it's mostly concrete. And I think, and then in elements here, I will draw your attention to the south elevation, so we wanted to show you how on the right side of this, which would be toward the plaza, will be at grade, and then we are grading down to where this, the temporary open area for the subterranean garage is located, so that's that gray that's down there. That will be filled in in the future with Phase 2B. I think, and then I think some other questions that came up is on the north side, we do have an equipment yard and cooling towers that is all screened via a brick wall that will be similar to what's already been used on site. So the architectural materials of this project are very similar. So I'll leave it there and answer any questions. Thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Thayer. Do anybody have any questions or comments regarding this initial design review? Another great project, I think.
I'll make a motion to approve pending all staff comments.
Second.
Motion and second, Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Haverwater.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, our next item is Walmart on Fortress Boulevard. It's the initial and final design review and site plan review for parking lot modifications for pickup service at an existing department store on 5.8 acres, zone CH and GDO1, located at 1153 Fortress Boulevard. Tom Keenan, representing DKT and R Investors, developer. Ms. Kerr, good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Thanks, Chair Jones, members of Planning Commission. The Market Walmart on Fortress Boulevard is in the process of permitting for interior remodeling and relocation of the online pickup service area within the store. With this remodel, they would like to include a new exit door on the front of the building. In addition, the applicant is converting the current green market colors to the signature, let me get you a picture, to the signature Walmart blue colors. Let's try this one more time. Okay, as you can see, there's very little bit of the green that was originally on there, and basically what they're doing is they are just going to be removing the green areas on the awnings and replace that with the blue color that they have. The applicant has submitted a site plan, and they, for the review, they plan to relocate these six current online pickup parking spaces that they currently have, and they want to modify the parking lot to allow these 18 spaces to now be online pickup spaces. The project is in good order, and staff request that this be official, initial and final design review, and recommends the approval be made subject to all staff comments. Myself and the applicant are available if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Kerr. So any questions? Yes?
I do have a question. What I'm, and I apologize, I haven't been able to locate, what's the parking requirement for this Walmart? Like at construction, what was the parking requirement?
Yeah, they still have their parking requirements. Let me see if I can figure out how to load this up. Their parking chart is located.
What page is that?
That would be page.
Looks like 144 spaces required, and then after the change, they'll still be 154. 175, no.
So they're still overparked, because we do not count the pickup spaces as actual parking spaces for what's required in the parking lot? So they are still within their regulations for their parking spaces. The parking provided is 154 spaces. Existing will be proposed 171.
Okay. They don't take all the good parking spots. I don't know where I'm going to park now.
Any other questions? Comments?
I'll make a motion to approve subject to staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob.
Ms. Haverwater.
Aye.
Mr. Carroll.
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton.
Aye.
Mr. Harris.
Aye.
Mr. Prince.
Aye.
Mr. Wright.
Aye.
Chair Jones.
Aye. Okay. Next, we're moving on to Platts and Plans. We have two items there. The first one is East Castle Street Commercial, site plan for a 3,600 square foot office building on 0.38 acres, zoned Commercial Highway and CCO, located along East Castle Street. Sean Hinton is the developer. Ms. Kerr.
Thank you again. This project is along East Castle, fronts on East Castle, it also fronts on Southeast Broad Street. There is some road construction that will be taking place in the front of the property, which is why this project has come before you today, one of the reasons. This is a design review and site plan review for a new corporate office building located at 310 and 316 East Castle Street. The applicant wishes to relocate administrative staff from other motor vehicle offices around Middle Tennessee area that he owns, and they will be processing paperwork such as title processing, customer registration with county clerk's offices, paperwork relative to new sales, and managing a customer database for late payment reminders, correspondence between customers and insurance companies for proper insurance coverage for items that have lien holdings on the title, and additional administrative tasks performed are related to the purchase and acquisition, inventory management, and electronic payment processing. The use of office is allowed by Wright in CH zoning and in the CCO district. The use motor vehicle sales and service, however, is not allowed by Wright, it is allowed by Wright in the CH zone, but it is not allowed in the CCO. So work at this location shall not include negotiations, finalization, or execution of any motor vehicle purchase, lease, or sales contracts. The lot shall not be used for storage or display of any vehicles for sale or lease, delivery of vehicles to customers, nor the inspection or repair of vehicles. Further, this lot shall not be used for any activity in which a license is required under the TCA 157101 and then 17128, which pertains to licensing for motor vehicle sales. This is a 3,600 square foot, one-and-a-half-story building. The exterior of the building is a wainscot precast stone base with primarily brick on the first floor, and then it has some fiber cement siding and trimming in the upper portion of the building. The building includes an exit on the west elevation. You know what? Let me get a different, let me get a different photo.
Amelia, the updated PDF is a separate PDF.
Sorry about that.
Already open.
We received some upgrades. We had asked for some upgrades on part of the building, which included a door on the west elevation of the building. They have an employee formal open space on the west side of the building, and so they're putting a fencing around there. The site plan portion of the plan shows that this will be a four-foot iron fencing around the perimeter. It looks more like a solid fencing on this actual architectural, so maybe Mr. Hudson can clarify that for us. They also have, in that area, there's going to be pavers, benches, landscaping to try to dress that up, and that will be a space for the employees.
Okay, Ms. Kerr, quick question.
Are those garage doors or windows?
Originally, they had requested garage roll-up doors there, and I asked, there was no base on the building, and we are required to have a base on the building. no base on the building, and we are required to have a base on the building at least two feet, and I requested the 24-inch base, and they took the base all the way to the tops of those windows. So, so they're supposed to be windows?
All right, I just wanna make sure they weren't roll-up doors.
Well, they, we do have a, on the site plan, there is a note on the site plan that is to be stated, that these will not be roll-up doors on those windows.
Okay.
Just for my curiosity, what requires this to go through the Planning Commission?
Excuse me?
What exceptions are they asking for?
Well, it has to come, whenever there is a project that includes roadwork, they're not asking for any exceptions, but this does require that they are putting in sidewalks, curb and gutters on this portion of East College Street, I mean, East Castle Street. So this project would require some additional roadwork as well.
Okay, thank you.
They have to come before this board when that happens.
Gotcha.
Is there a building or a structure on this property now?
There is currently not a building on this structure, and I don't know. Let's see, let me go back to Matthew's original. There are two empty lots currently.
I think you went past it.
Oh, this thing moves too fast for me. There we go. This gentleman purchased these two lots, I believe it was last October. Currently, they own these lots as well, and that was the reason that we were working with him diligently on this not being a portion of a car lot that would extend into this area over here. Mr. Bill Huddleston?
Because it is car lots on the two lots that they currently own?
On these, they are legally non-conforming.
Car lots.
Car lots at the current time.
Are we speaking about Lot 310 and 316?
This, this lot right here is 310, this is 316. This is where they wish to build, and this is where, the parking lot basically would be in this area, and the building would be on this portion. These three lots right here are currently, they're legally non-conforming. I believe actually this lot was mainly that they expanded back into this area back here that's gravel.
So it's zoned CCO and CH.
Yes.
You can do anything you want in CH, but the CCO is what prevents it from being a car lot.
Yes, sir, and, and because it was already legally, it was already established prior to the changes to our CCO in 2018.
Yeah.
2018, when car lots were no longer allowed in the CCO.
Other comments and questions? So we're reviewing a site plan for their office building, 3,600 square feet, and the adjoining property.
Where's the entrance to the building at? On which side of the building?
It's gonna be facing Castle Street.
So on the north side?
It's on the north side.
So is there sidewalk on the back of those, like the handicap stalls right there, that'll lead to the front door for the people parking in the parking lot, or how do they?
Well, there was a, they have to have a three-foot base of building. Staff really wanted them to have that three-footed base of building planting around that side of the building. So we opted to allow them to be able to use the sidewalk that they're gonna be using at the front.
So do they gotta walk through the parking lot to get to the sidewalk in the front, in the right-of-way right there? Is that how they access?
They would have to walk to this portion right here to get on the sidewalk, to go to the front entrance of their building.
And the building is only, how far off the property line, Amelia?
Uh-huh, like, six feet, eight feet.
Yeah, so rather than have a sidewalk within that six feet running parallel to the, to the public sidewalk?
They will also have the, the base of building plantings along the front as well. You see, from the landscaping plan, we've, we've asked them to put quite a bit of landscaping.
So was there a platte that combined these two lots? Is that?
It was on the consent agenda.
Mm-hmm. What's the pervious paver area on the west side gonna be?
The pervious pavers right there, that is the, the formal open space for the employees. That wasn't originally planned. I asked them to put those in there because they were having benches and landscaping, and I just asked for them to put some pavers in there, to have something of substance to put their benches and flower pots and whatnot on. And then these, of course, are for drainage.
So there's no, I mean, I know we're not even talking about the other two lots, but there's no improvements to those lots in question that we know of. I know that's not part of this application, but the two lots that they already own, where the cars are gonna be, is that a gravel lot now, or is it a, is it a paved lot?
A portion of that, I don't know what the number of the lot is. I don't know if this shows on here or not.
Are you speaking about, about 310?
Yeah, yeah.
In the back portion of that, that goes back out to Castle Street?
Right.
That is gravel. You know, it's portions of it has some asphalt, it's just in disrepair.
Yeah.
Is the applicant here?
The applicant is available.
Okay.
Bill, I mean, any improvements, I know that's not part of this application, but any improvements proposed?
They offered to do some improvements for that. I'm Bill Huddleston with Huddleston Steel Engineering, but the city staff didn't really want them to, because they didn't want more car lot going on out there.
Right, but I mean, they, is that the intent, to have a car lot here?
No, absolutely.
Not on the other two lots, is what I'm getting at.
On the other two lots?
Yes.
They are a car lot?
Yeah.
Yeah.
That's what I'm getting at, so I guess we don't, well...
Staff was very clear to the developer early on, and we met with the planning director as well, that there's absolutely no car dealing to go on in this lot.
Yeah.
We're fine with that.
I would hope that we could improve the lots that are, that are the existing car lots now as part of this improvement, but, I mean, how many areas in the city do we have a gravel entrance to a car lot? I'd say not many.
Right, I agree with that. You want them to add a driveway ramp?
Well, I mean, we can't, because it's not part of this application, but you would just hope that as part of this application, that maybe some upgrades, I wouldn't call them upgrades, but improvements could be made to the other two lots.
Well, it's my understanding that that is in the CCO, and when we start improving it, then you are...
I'm with you.
...condoning...
I'm with you.
Car dealing in the...
You can't improve it, because if you try to do anything, you...
Right.
Okay.
And so if you're negotiating a car, you have to make sure you're not, like, hey, before I can negotiate this car, we gotta walk over here?
Yeah, there's not gonna be car salesmen at this location.
Yeah, yeah.
So it's 6167.
It's a predicament to be in, isn't it?
Okay.
So currently, yes, we're looking at only the site plan.
Right.
Those two lots for the office building that we just reviewed.
Right.
That does not have roll-up garage doors on it.
Then I'll make a motion to approve it, subject to staff comments.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Saberwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Our next item, North Church Street Town Homes Site Plan for eight single-family residential attached dwelling units within two buildings on 0.8 acres, zoned RM12 and CCO, located along the east side of North Church Street. Sherri Floyd, developer. You can correct me on that. Ms. Smith, how are you?
Not sure either. Good afternoon. As you can see on the screen above you, this particular project is located on North Church Street. This is directly across the street from the Rutherford County Health Department. You can see there, there are two structures currently on two of the three lots. These are currently three individual lots of record, and it might have been a little bit unclear in the paperwork, but on your consent calendar, you had a platte proposal to actually consolidate these three lots, and then just provide a new lot line down the middle of the two, so that breaks it into two separate lots instead of the three that you see there currently. So the current structures on site that we would see being removed with the project are these two particular ones, and we're also about a block from the Judicial Center here, and this is just outside the North Highlands Expanded Downtown area as well. So the applicant is looking at a bulk zoning proposal. This is not a planned development, so staff is just reviewing it for consistency with our zoning code, because it is an RM12 and CCO overlay. It allows for density to be, I think it's 11.6 units per acre. This particular project site is below that at 10.04 dwelling units per acre. It is also, in our future land use map, designated mixed form housing, and that particular encouraged character area has no more than four units on a parcel. So that was part of the reason that the applicant chose to create the two parcels instead of keeping three individual parcels. And then, secondly, the current RM12 zoning district has larger setback requirements if all eight units were on one parcel of record, and so therefore they, by having four units on each parcel, have five-foot side yard setbacks was the main reason for, again, putting that together. Staff has some updated pages for you, because as we were working through the project, if it was all on one lot of record, the eight units would have triggered formal open space. So you'll notice formal open space is there, but you'll notice a staff comment, please remove pergola. So as we were working through our formal review of it this month, leading up to today, they moved those property lines to be directly down the center of the drive aisle, which split the pergola. Accessory structures have to be five feet off of the property lines, and therefore staff worked with Mr. Blomley, because it was supposed to be formal open space, but now if it's four lots, it's private open space. We're going to utilize those formal open spaced areas as their private open space, because really, it's, it's acting as all eight units within that one area. So we did provide this updated standard sheet, which is just an easy way to say, yep, it checks all the boxes. This particular one has parking, both a one-car garage for each unit, a one-car garage, one-car surface directly in back of the garage, and then an assigned parking space across the drive aisle for every single unit. So three parking spaces, plus the entirety of the project has another one, two, three, four, five, six guest parking spaces on top of that based on the three bedrooms. So they are providing, I believe it's a total of 30, 30 parking spaces in total for the eight units. So in looking at the site plan layout, you'll notice this updated one that we received yesterday, and I appreciate our engineering firm pulling that together, because we really want to show you as clean as possible, so there's not confusion, and I will be suggesting the removal of some of the staff comments based on these after I go through the project. So as I mentioned, that property line splits the driveway here, so they've removed that pergola structure, provided kind of a walking path, pavers here, and then the two seating walls, and then there's landscaping in this area, as well as their kiosks and those particulars for their formal open space. As far as setbacks are concerned, you can see at this level, the CCO average build-two line is 20 feet. We are allowed to plus or minus that by two feet, and porches are allowed to go five feet in front of that, so you can see here they've made those adjustments. The building actually sits about 21 feet, and then that porch pokes out about six feet to basically provide some articulation and to consolidate two entry doors here, two entry doors here, so that it looks like it's less units on the front facade that faces Church Street. Going to the next page, and you can see, again, each of the units, there's that garage surface, and then the parking space here, and here's your extra guest parking towards the center of the space. Here you can see those landscape components built through, as well as perimeter plantings on both sides of the building, both north, south, and towards the west portions of each of the buildings. And then going on to HVAC, they did provide some details as far as fencing enclosures that will surround those HVAC pads, and then a decorative mail kiosk. Two of them are proposed for the site, but obviously the postal service will confirm whether or not two are acceptable, or whether they'll require consolidation. Here just shows the layout plan for each of those buildings, so really when you're looking at this bottom one, what you'll see here on the left and the right is if you were standing in front of the property, the building you would see on the left, the driveway between the two, and then the building on the right. These are both two-story structures, and each of the residents contain about 25, 20 square feet of space, so they're pretty big size for the breakout. And so here, what we got some updates on for the architecture, boy, this is really touchy, is the front facade here on the bottom is the one that would actually face Church Street, so they've actually added, from what you have in your packet, the, above the windows, you have kind of the headers that are using the same building material as the base of building, a stone type of use over each of those windows, and then we have a little bit of architectural detailing here at the top, because it seemed like it was out of scale and not fully reading as details for the building. And then, it's hard to see here, but they actually have, I believe it's 10-foot ceilings on the interior of the ground floor, so these front doorways are a little bit higher and massive. It's hard to see it in this particular elevation, but that provides a little bit more of that tall structure that we like to see in our design guidelines. The top two, what you're seeing here is really what you would see as you're going through that driveway into the complex. They're basically mirroring each other, but this one here is actually what you'll see on the, I have to look for a second, right elevation south. So interior, as well as the two buildings' exteriors, are almost identical, they're just slightly flipped, whether you'll see them, but they mirror each other throughout the site. And then on the backside, what you have is those garage doors and back entryways, so that folks can either park in the surface parking in their garages, or in their space in front of the units to access those uses. And then lastly, here's a little bit better transition. This is really what you're gonna see along Church Street. This is really what you're going to see along Church Street, that facade that you'll get. And it has a little bit of building articulation with the change of the hips and gable roof systems. And then, again, as you can see, this is a five-foot step-out for that porch. And you can see those two doorways under each of those. But the thought was, is instead of this looking like a four-unit building, it feels like a two-unit building. And then the same thing with its match. With that, they are utilizing basically brick stacked stone, and then a hardy plank. The hardy plank is on the upper floor level here, in the very lightest color, and then really on those other three sides on the second floor. Going back to the site layout and the conditions of approval, and as we were looking at it, we did clarify that the building height per our city code is at 28 feet. That's the midpoint of that upper roof. And the very highest point is 35.5 feet. The 35 feet that is the limit in this district is based on our definition of height, which is actually that 28-foot lower roof line. So right here, roughly about halfway up, is where our building zoning code actually defines height. It's not the top tallest portion of the building. So here, staff would recommend, as we went through all of the staff comments and standards, it appears that all of the standards are being met by this particular project. And with these updates that we've shared with you today, staff would recommend the removal of planning commission, or planning staff conditions for A, 4B, 4C, updating the building height to 28 feet in 4D, removal of 5, 6, changing 7 to just add a path to that seated wall area, and then the removal of conditions 9B through 9J. So really, it's a much cleaner visual project, so that you all would know what the setbacks were, what the architectural features look like within this project site. And then for the context, this is within our downtown Main Street revitalization plan. So you will see the decorative streetlight poles being installed along this particular project site. There's also will be sidewalk as well. And this is as you're looking southbound on Church Street. Where the arrow is, is where the vacant portion of the site is, with this building and the next building being removed directly across the street. Again, is that Health Department building that's owned by the city. And you can see the Judicial Center here in the background. And then furthermore, in the area to the project, this little building is just to the north of it and abuts the project. This is Olive Street and the next building over. And then these are the two buildings to the south of it, again, all within an RM12 zone district. But this particular one is not within our North Highlands program. It's only within the mixed form housing general plan. So with that, the applicant's owner is here, their engineer, as well as their architect, if you have any specific questions on the project. I'm sure they'll be happy to answer them.
And David Alcorn's here, too.
Sorry. I don't know all the persons.
So this is straight zone, RM12, and it's fitting that requirement. So we don't have much say on architectural style, or the look, or anything like that. So what are we deciding on?
Well, architectural style, it's still subject to our regular design guidelines. So we don't get a lot of direction from our planning documents here, because it just says, "It shall be a traditional building," in the mixed form housing, and it shouldn't be more than four units. So what staff's job is, is to give very little direction, which is, you need a base body and cap. The materials should speak to the materials in close proximity to this, and your height can't be more than, you know, this. So there is some, you know, tweaking that we have done with it to try to get some of those different components. But design is definitely very subjective. So staff checks all the boxes on the objective side, and really, design is part of planning commission's, my understanding, purview.
Yeah, the planning commission has authority. When we adopted design guidelines, the planning commission was approved as the official design review body. So the design guidelines, the planning commission is the ultimate arbiter of whether or not the plans that come before you are compliant with the architectural standards in the design guidelines. Thank you.
Don't everybody jump up and talk.
So, comments, questions, then?
But there is no pergola. I just had to throw that out.
Is the existing sidewalk along the, along North Church Street, is that remaining in place, or are they putting a new sidewalk in after construction?
Generally, the way that works is during construction, if the sidewalk is good, we will allow them to leave it. But if they damage it, they have to remove and replace. And in this particular condition, I believe there is quite a bit of mill and overlay that they're doing street cuts to. And they're going to have to close up the ones that they're not using. So it's going to probably likely cause most of it to get ripped out and replaced.
Got it.
I'm just going to say, in regards to what we can say regarding the design, in general, it's okay. I don't feel like it kind of gets the whole North Church Street vibe.
Yeah, it doesn't fit.
And if we're trying to make sure, as part of the CCO, that we're trying to make sure that things fit, you know, the new, you know, we appreciate the investment in our downtown and trying to revitalize that area. But I do think that we have, you know, I want to be proud of what we see in the city that we have had any say-so over. If you say, "We can't say anything about the design," then, okay, we won't say anything about the design. But if we have some say-so over the actual design, you know, I'd love to see a little bit of improvement in that. I like the general, I think the little porch looks, you know, it's kind of nice. I guess it's the red brick that's really jumping out that is, doesn't feel, other than the fact you've got the judicial building across the street. In regards to the residential areas of North Church Street, it doesn't feel like it fits as well.
And it feels very apartment-y to me. Like, you would see this at an apartment complex type of look.
I just think even a different color scheme would improve.
I'd say a different color brick would be nice.
Yeah, even the brick changes off of the red brick would be a huge improvement.
Red brick is very aggressive.
I'm usually a fan of red brick. I just don't like the way these look.
And I think in the past, they actually did propose red brick all the way up the entire front face, instead of breaking it in this particular way. But the question then became, where was the building base, body and cap? And so this was a modification. Now, we have seen ones over on Spring Street that are very different than this, that were townhomes, three, that were more vertical, all brick, lighter tan, and it actually went three stories, had rooftop. So it was definitely feel more like a downtown versus something that's more suburban. But that may be something that the applicant may be able to address. Because sometimes, you know, facades are easy to change once you've got the floor plan. It's, you know, how do you skin the plan? And maybe Bill can address that a little.
Afternoon again, Bill Huddleston, Huddleston Steel Engineering. We did go through a lot of iterations on the architecture. Mr. Sherif is here, and he wants something that he can be proud of also. So we're open to, if you want a darker brick, I'm not sure what you're really wanting, but we're open to that.
I don't feel like the stone and the brick complement each other. And it could just be the rendering, so it's...
Well, I was about to say, could we pull up the materials? Because you're right, a lot of times, the renderings, when they come through the computer and the copy machine, they don't...
It looks yellowish.
Yeah, so you see that Watson Town brick, it's not as red as the renderings, it's more of a burgundy color. And it seems to fit with that Colorado Dry Stack rock, which is right above it there.
But if it was a lighter color, my gosh, it would just look fabulous.
I'm sorry, what was that?
Lighter color better.
Lighter colored brick? We can do that.
Much more neutral palette to look, you know...
You okay with that?
I agree with lighter color as well.
Okay, he's good with that. We've got, the architect's a guy named Mr. Sam Anderson out of Nashville, and he's real responsive, so I think he can make it happen.
I think that'll be good.
Then, motion to approve, subject is staff comments, and a lighter brick.
Okay, we need to see the brick again? It's kind of subjective. I don't know that we can vote on a lighter brick.
And I guess what staff thinks that we would hear would probably be a neutral tone, so I would pick probably one of the colors off of that stacked stone. So if you're looking at...
I guess my thing is...
I would think that it would probably be in this color. So it still gets that contrast for the building, so you can see the details on the building. But then it's very subdued and understated.
I realize that it's straight zone, but I'm going to make this comment. I would much rather it look like townhomes than these, what look like apartment buildings. I'm less concerned with the color of the brick than I am with the style of the building on North Church Street.
Is that a public service announcement?
That's a public service announcement.
I agree. Is it the roof line, I would think?
It's the whole entire building.
It's a big square building.
Yeah, it's just a big square with no definition, no, I mean, it doesn't look like anything that's downtown at all. I mean, it's straight zone, so, I mean, there's not much I'm going to say, and just let the builder do his thing, but it just, public service announcement.
But I think what I'm hearing is, the owner's open to those things, and this has been a struggle for staff as well. You know, because, again, here's what you have on the, you know, front facade there today. So even when you look at the roof here, it's standing seam metal. It's not composition roof, right? When you look at this, you have features around each of the windows that provide some detailing, and it's a massive cupboard porch, you know? And so trying to look at those things, it's very difficult. But at least, some of the things we look at is the overall roof line. If you have four, what I'll call them, tiki-tacky boxes that go up, that definitely feels like an apartment. So we said, make it not look like it's four units. And then usually, you'll go ahead and maybe have the same material across the entire front, which unifies the building. But the shape and the form can easily modify without really much change to both costs, other than redrawing the rendering. But if we can get some direction that you would feel comfortable with today, I think we can turn that around very quickly and bring it back to you at our next meeting, so you can visually see. Because staff wants to make sure, and it sounds like the owner really wants to be proud of his project site, but this one, staff did not provide a lot of direction, because none of our plans provide a lot of direction in this case.
Like I said, it's straight zone, so, I mean, he wants to take the risk. I would much rather it look like eight definitive units that were definitive than an apartment building.
Well, and looking at the inside, though, I would hate to have to make the applicant rework the entire inside, just to have eight separate, or four separate entrances on each building. I think going forward, I do agree with you on this project. I do think maybe just some, I think two things. One, maybe some shutters on the windows to make it look more like a house. Are you guys open to that? Maybe just not, yep? And then, is there anything, what have you seen, Ms. Smith, like, where those two aluminum downspouts are in the center of the building, is there anything we can do there? Like, stone, or something, just to show that it's two separate buildings, even though they're attached? Does that make sense?
Yeah, and in here, you can see a very light striation line. And one of the comments that the staff did leave in place was, "Add columnar detailing back to the drawing along the front facade in line with those set of downspouts." And I also have a note here, "In contrasting color." So the thought was, is if this, I don't know if you can see my hand very lightly coming down here, you can see those little lines, and then there's actually a little line here and here. And it may be easier to see on the single-page facade. Boy, this is so touchy. There I go. So here, you can kind of see those lines coming down, the columns. So in staff's comment, the intent was, is at least across the front, you would see three distinct columns that are contrasting in color, so it looks like it's two separate portions of the building. And it kind of helps break up that flat facade. And the intent is also to have these, whatever color that column is, is that the downspouts be in that same color painting. And here is where you can kind of see, before, we didn't have, we had soldier brick above the windows. And here, we just said, "Provide a contrasting color," whatever your choice is. And at the moment, they've gone ahead and used a stone type of use. But again, if you want to see, so what I think I'm hearing is, that you'd like to see some shutters flanking the windows on the front facade of the building. You're wanting to see that detail coming down on those end caps where the downspouts currently reside. Of course, the red being changed out to more neutral color is what I've got written down so far.
And these things you're calling columns, Ms. Smith, they'll be protruding from the brick? They won't just be a change in brick color? I want to be clear on that.
Usually, we see it's, what, like a four or six inch? So it's usually in line width, unless it's called out differently.
Okay, I'm just curious.
But usually, the change in color makes it look like there's more depth to it versus what you might see in the GDO, which is usually more like a one, two, or three-foot depth change for those columns. Sometimes, people will do that kind of a bump-out column for the purposes of hiding your downspouts, so that they can hide them within a chase, and then wrap that chase with a brick, so it feels like a real column, is another alternative that you might see on a front facade. Because you don't really see any downspouts anywhere down in downtown that are visible. Most of them have none.
So is it possible that we can just make these design changes and see it again next meeting? Is that possible?
Which I think next meeting is...
August 7th, the night meeting?
Yeah. Is that okay with the applicant? Okay. Yeah. Sorry to kind of throw a wrench in things, but I think I'd like to see it again. I think I'll be excited about it if I can see it again, personally.
Okay.
Well, and staff definitely appreciates your input on this one, because this one, really, we didn't have much input. But I think as we start to work more in downtown, and we start seeing what your likes and dislikes, hey, does this really fit into our context? It'll make it easier for staff and the development community to land where you need us to.
Sounds good.
So, Ms. Ava Water, if y'all vote to defer, we could put it on the August 7th agenda if he's ready, or we could put it on the August 21st agenda if he's not ready in time for the August 7th meeting.
Okay, I'll motion to defer, then.
Second motion.
Okay, so we have a motion and a second to defer. Ms. Jako?
Ms. Ava Water?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
And that is a nighttime meeting as well.
21st?
21st, because of timeframe.
Thank y'all very much for working with us on that.
Thank you so much.
All right, moving on to new business. We have a zoning application for approximately 0.32 acres, located along Roberts Street, to be rezoned from OGR and CCO to RS8 and CCO. Blue Sky Construction Inc. is the applicant. Ms. Smith?
Thank you so much. As you can see on the aerial map that's on my screen, this particular project site is two lots that were recently platted, just to confirm that they were separate ownerships. But it does have an interesting zone district in this particular area. As you'll notice, the OGR labeling is here, and... As you'll notice, the OGR labeling is here, and really, that OGR takes up the two corner lots adjacent to the project site, as well as the project site, and then to the south. Adjacent to the opposite side is CM RS8, and then to the south is CMR. So kind of a lot of leftover zoning in these particular areas, but it is also within our North Highlands general plan, Highlands area, excuse me, character areas. According to this map page above, you'll notice that the area is highlighted and currently is in that North Highlands single-family residential character area, while a higher-density residential is located to the south for long-term planning purposes, and then a different residential district, again, wedged between these multiple areas. As the owner applicant was looking at this particular project site, the existing zoning district actually requires a 10-foot side yard setback. Normally, our RS8, or even this adjacent district here, actually only requires a five-foot, so the CM RS8 only requires five feet setbacks on both sides. And along this street, most of the lots are only 50 feet in width, which is barely meeting our minimum requirements. So based on that, the applicant, the area you'll notice is also CM to the north. This is actually the front parking lot of the Oakland's Park in front of the Oakland's Mansion. So here, they're looking at, or contemplate, putting something that looks much more traditional in style, but they want to be able to have those five-foot side yard setbacks to accommodate a front entry garage on both of the lots. So we did ask them to at least prepare a conceptual plot plan. This is not tied to the project at all, but we wanted to make sure if they changed to an RS8 zone district, that they were able to do so. So ideally, if you look, and both of the properties are this same dimensioning basically, but to meet the CCO requirements with that zone change, you have a 13-foot build-to-line in this one, and that's a building structure, so they're showing a porch kind of to the front, pop-out of the front building being in that area with the entry, and then a garage that's slightly setback, so that it can retain a minimum of 22 feet to park directly in front of those garage units. And then, as a two-car garage, the CCO, if it's setback slightly here, is a 60% maximum facade. So if you're looking at the building, the garage component contains no more than 60% of that front facade, and the remainder is either porch slash entryway. So in reviewing that, it looks like they can fit that within this particular zone district. So today, we're asking you to set their public hearing, because it is a bulk zone change, to your August 7th meeting, and I believe the applicant's engineer is here, should you have any questions.
And just to reiterate, those, those plot plans are simply illustrative of examples that could be built. There's not a planned development, so these are just, just illustrations of, of what could be done, nothing that would be tied to the zoning.
So they'll be combining the two lots and asking for RS8 residential, single-family, 8,000 square foot, and it is, does have the CCO overlay?
Correct. It still stays two separate lots. Really, the only change is that it's changing the zone district, which allows a narrower side yard setback.
So is what we're looking at just one?
Yes, this is just one, so this is lot one, and then lot two, directly adjacent to it.
Yes, I think the reduced side yards are the primary purpose for why Mr. Burns is requesting the rezoning, to give him additional flexibility on, on his building envelope. Also, the change in zoning to RS8 would eliminate the other types of uses, the commercial office uses that are permitted under the current zoning, and it would, it would restrict the amount of uses to primarily single-family residential if it were rezoned to RS8.
Which OG was our office general residential for?
Yes.
Just...
And we're finding out that there is less utility for that since the hospital moved.
Throughout the space.
Okay, so we're looking to schedule a public hearing for August 7th?
So moved.
Second.
Motion, second, Ms. Jako.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Thank you, Commission. Thank you, appreciate it. All right, our next item. We have a zoning application for approximately 29.5 acres located along Old Salem Road to be rezoned from CF to RS12. Alcorn Properties LLC is the applicant. Mr. Donovan, good afternoon.
Thank you, Chair Jones, and good afternoon, members of the planning commission. Before you this afternoon, we have a rezoning application to rezone subject parcel, the subject parcel from commercial fringe to single-family residential with a 12,000 square foot minimum. This, these subject properties are located on the southern side of Old Salem Road and are currently vacant. As I said, there are three, there are three parcels involved totaling 29.5 acres. Due to environmental limitations on this site, the, the applicant intends to develop this property as a large lot, single-family residential. As I've mentioned at a previous meeting, there's a prior flood study that was done on this, along with the site plan that was previously approved by that body. It shows much of this area being in floodway or floodplain, and the city has currently undertook a flood study in this area as well, that is currently underway, but not complete. And that, that flood study could constrain the site further in the future. So as far as the, the surrounding property, most of this area is a single, developed as single-family residential and zoned residential or commercial of the surrounding area. The properties to the northeast and the south are currently vacant. Property to the west is Cherry Grove subdivision, and to the north is large lot, single-family residential in the county. As far as the zoning surrounding the property, to the north and northeast is in the county, and it's their medium-density residential zoning. And then to the south is CF and CH in the city, and to the west is RS15. The future land use map for this area identifies it as general commercial. General commercial is intended for commercial development along collectors and arterial streets. It's intended to be auto-oriented, with large portions of the site used for parking, drive aisles, things of that nature, but is intended to draw people from outside of Murfreesboro to the, the site. The RS12 zoning would be inconsistent with that GC designation in the land use, on the land use map, but we do have a transition policy that allows for flexibility when environmental conditions present opportunities that are different than the parcel lines that may exist. In this current case, Pruckett Creek kind of acts as a natural barrier that would be a good, a good point for the land use to change and transition from commercial south of the creek to residential on the side, and then the larger lot residential that's in the county just to the north. So the planning commission would need to discuss the, the rezoning request and schedule a public hearing for this matter. Staff has recommended the public hearing be set for August 7th.
We had some discussion on this last time. Is there any discussion or any further comments before we get a motion for a public hearing?
Did, did we get the study?
I believe they've got the, Mr. Taylor, you want to bring us up to date on the, the study we were looking for last time?
Sorry, thank you, Mr. Donovan. I can discuss the study, but I've got a little, kind of timeline, schedule, just so you can overlap that. I'll hand that out, if y'all can look at that.
Sure.
We had completed a study here several years ago. We actually utilized that study when we did the Redeemer Academy site plan. We do not believe the city's current undertaking is going to differ a whole lot from that, because we are so far away from any controlling hydraulic structures. The closest one to us would be the bridge under Veterans, right there at the intersection with New Salem Highway. However, my client, the seller on the property, understands that if the, whatever the city's study shows, we're going to respect that with any future plans here. And so, what I've outlined on this, on this study, this timeline, is just showing where we are today with the 17th, and then where we expect to be over the next couple of months. And so, the city, the city's consultant is supposed to have a draft flood study in the next couple of weeks, and then supposed to be actually submitting the CLOMAR to FEMA, you know, two to four weeks after that. And we wouldn't even be done with zoning until approximately mid-September, and so the earliest a preliminary plat or any sort of plan could be submitted back to you all would be in October. And so, we would have all the data from the city's study, be able to incorporate that into any proposed plan. And then, we also know that there's going to be several months of review by the utilities and engineering and TDEC, even after a planning commission meeting. And so, our anticipation is that the, that FEMA would be approving any CLOMAR application from the city in approximately mid-December. We don't anticipate any sort of, you know, permissible plans until probably March of next year, and that's, that's a very aggressive schedule based on my experience. So we've got a lot of time to incorporate whatever the city, you know, whatever this study shows, and, and we are fully aware that, you know, we're not going to be able to utilize this entire property. We are going to be impacted by the study. The previous plan was impacted by the study, and we, we will just take that, and we'll morph it into what the city's study shows.
So it's, it's my understand, and I want to be correct in my comments, it's my understanding that even if this timeline goes through, and we, and we, well, this is, we're just setting a public hearing, and let's just say that this gets rezoned at the public hearing, this property cannot be developed until this FEMA plan is approved.
Yes, sir.
And, and so irrespective of the zoning, nothing can be done on this property until that FEMA plat is approved, and is that a correct statement?
Yes, sir. We, we will not get a permit issued to us until FEMA has approved the CLOMAR.
Okay.
And, and that would be the absolute earliest, is whenever FEMA approves that.
Okay. And then, whatever consideration is made for engineering of this property, and how it would affect downstream, if that's the right term, would be part of the site plan approval, or would that be done even prior to that?
It'd be part of, with the residential, it should be part of the preliminary plat approval that would come back before you all, and so it would follow the city's floodplain ordinance. And so, I, I would anticipate that the city's consultant is going to establish a floodway along this segment, and then establish a 100-year flood elevation. And so, that means they're not going to be able to fill inside that floodway, and that these homes would have to be, the finished floor is going to have to be two feet above the 100-year flood elevation. And so, just like we would in, if it was already established, is how we would be treating this.
I think that's all very helpful information. Appreciate the timeline, Ms. Taylor.
Yes, sir.
And all the explanation.
Jamie, do you have other questions at all? I mean...
I take comfort knowing we will see it again.
Okay.
So, thank you.
All right, I'll make a motion to schedule a public hearing on August 7th.
Second.
Motion, second, Ms. Jako.
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye.
Okay. Our next item is a zoning application for approximately 21.14 acres located along New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive to be rezoned from RS15 to CF. It's 12.14 acres. And PRD, Salem Town PRD for 8.74 of acres. Harney Homes is the applicant. Mr. Donovan?
Thank you, Chair Jones. As you stated, this is a request to rezone the property from RS15 to the northern, or the northern 12.4 acres of the property to commercial fringe, and then the southern 8.7 remainder to the Salem Town PRD. And this property is located at 2511 New Salem Highway, or the southwest corner of New Salem Highway and Salem Creek Drive intersection. The site is currently home to a fellowship United Methodist Church, which is allowed in the RS15 district by special use permit, and their last special use permit for the site was issued in 2017 for an expansion of the facility and parking associated with So this, let me get back, get down to the zoning map here. So the, the adjacent properties in this area are zoned and developed as a mixture of commercial and residential. It's zoned commercial, residential, and then there are a few plan developments, either PUDs or PRDs or PCDs. The property to the north, across the street, is on CH. It is currently vacant. The property to the northeast, where it's listed as PCD on the map, is the Salem Creek Commons Plan to Commercial Development. That allows CF-type uses in it. There are a few exclusions for, for beer and liquor stores at those location, at the, in that PR, PCD. And then just to the south, the CF piece of property there is the Salem Creek Church of Christ. And then further south, you have Ashton at Salem Creek, which is a townhome development that is zoned PRD. And then the OG has a GMP Realty Office on that, at that location. And then, also on that eastern fringe, you have a little bit of RS12 to the east of the most southern portions of this property. Directly to the south is the Salem Creek Single Family Residential Development that's zoned RS15. And then you have Boxwood Plantation, which is currently vacant, is the PUD to the, the west, which allows a mixture of housing type, single-family, single-family, attached and detached, two-family housing, as well as office uses and commercial uses that generally align with the CF zoning district as well. As far as the future land use plan for this area, I'll get back to the map in the top. It is identified as PI, which is public and private institutional. This is intended for governmental buildings, hospitals, or public, both public and private institutional type uses, like the existing church. You would expect to see there government buildings. Initially, when the, the land use plan was done, we looked to exist in land use to set those designations, and at the time, there wasn't necessarily a change contemplated for this, so that's the reason you're, you're seeing the, the PI versus another land use. It was kind of thought that this would remain a church, and then until this, you know, plan, plan came to us. So the commercial fringe and the Salem Town PRD zoning is inconsistent with the future land use plan, but this is another opportunity where the transition policy may be appropriate. You have commercial fringe type uses that are, that are along New Salem Highway, that are similar in scope, and then as you transition southern on the, to the... And then as you transition southern on the, to the south on the side, you're transitioning down to townhomes and ultimately to single-family residential, which is similar to what's currently on the east side of Salem Creek Drive. So this would be a, when it would be appropriate to use the transition policy. So I'm going to start on the southern portion of the southern 8, 8.7 acres of the property where the Salem Town PRD is and kind of go through the points of the Salem Town PRD. The proposed PRD is 47 attached, single-family residential units in eight buildings with five or six units in each building. The density for the PRD comes out to 5.38 acres, our units per acre. And the individual townhomes are going to be accessed off a private street. The private street will have sidewalk on both sides as well as streetlights. And it'll have access onto Salem Creek Drive as well as there is a secondary access onto the church property to the, to the west side of the property. And then the solid waste product will be provided by a private hauler. The properties are going to be sold in HP, as a HPR. And a HOA will be established to maintain all common areas and exteriors, including the driveways on the site. So the buildings on site will be 35 foot tall with one or two stories. They'll all be two or three-bedroom units with 16 units being three-bedroom. Those will be the end units. The interior 31 units will be two-bedroom units. All units will have a garage. The end units will have two-car garages with the interior garages having single-car garages. And the units will all be a minimum of 1,350 square feet excluding the garage. There will be a six-foot tall privacy fence on the backside of each of the units to provide some screen in there where the patio is and the HVAC units will be on the backsides of the units as well. As far as the materials for the development, the fronts are going to be brick, stone, or cement, cement board siding with 50% of that being, at a minimum of 50% being brick or stone. The side will have the first story brick or stone, second story will be cement fiber with, again, there'll be a minimum there of 50% brick or stone. And the rear is being hardy siding. And then the only place vinyl is going to be permitted will be in the soffits and trim of the properties. As far as setbacks on the site, this is where you're going to see the lone exception in the PRD. Salem Creek, the setback on Salem Creek Road, or Salem Creek Drive here will be reduced by 10 feet from 35, that would be typical in the RSA2 district, to 25 feet. That's the lone exception. The other boundaries to the north, they're proposing a 20-foot setback. The western would be a 20-foot setback and the southern boundary would be 50 feet. All of those meet or exceed the standards in the RSA2 district. Internal to the site, the garages will be set back at least 35 feet from the back of the sidewalk. The home, the front of the homes could be as little as 15 feet and there'll be 30-foot space in between each of the buildings, building groupings. Patios, porches, and stoops would be permitted to encroach five foot into that 15-front, 15-foot setback between the sidewalk and the home. As far as parking goes on the site, they'd be required to have 122 spaces. Since they have 126 in driveway spaces, 63 if you include the, are additional if you include the, the garage, garage parking spaces and then 24 guest parking spaces. So their total parking is at 223 for the entire site. As far as open space goes, they have 3.1 acres of open space. It's about 36% of the site and that includes stormwater management area, some floodway along Spencer, Spence Creek, amenities area that is central, that is being used for their formal open space that includes a pavilion and a pickleball court. And then their landscaping buffers, which include planting yards along the, a portion of the common area between where the CF zoning will be in this site and to the, what would be the west. And then at the northeast corner where entry into the site is, they're proposing a type B buffer, so there'll be a little bit of additional landscaping where you're seeing that request for an exception to 25 feet on the setback. So the, now I'll discuss, let me just, oh, clear. So now we'll talk about the CF portion, which is the northern 12 acres of the site. So CF would allow, the commercial fringe district would allow the church, existing church building to remain there by right. That would eliminate the need for them to go before the Board of Zoning Appeals and request any additional special use permits for an expansion of the site. The CF district also allows a variety of retail uses, office, medical uses. I've included the use table for you and highlighted the, what would be allowed within that district. It does restrict to drive-through window, drive-through windows and fuel cells being within 250 feet of residentially zoned properties. So any of those top facilities would have to be further from, from residential properties. Additionally, this is something, just so you know, when we had the initial discussion with the applicant about the portion that's on CF, they were discussing potentially subdividing that in the future. So the CF would be support, you know, dividing that off in the future, potentially having some out parcels along the front that would then in turn have shared access with the church to those commercial properties. So the planning commission will need to discuss this rezoning request and schedule it for a public hearing. Staff has recommended August 7th for that public hearing.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Donovan. Does anybody have any questions regarding this zoning application? Comments?
Motion, motion to schedule a public hearing for August 7th.
Okay.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Mr. Wright, away from the desk. Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay. Thank you very much. Our next item is a zoning ordinance amendment regarding the use airport heliport and pertaining to the following sections. Chart one, uses permitted by zoning district and chart one end notes, uses permitted by zoning district. The City of Murfreesboro Planning Department is the applicant. Mr. Blomley, you taking this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Great.
Thank you. This is a very brief zoning ordinance amendment dealing with the use airport heliport, specifically as it pertains to the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. So right now, the use airport heliport is only allowed by special use permit according to chart one of the zoning ordinance. It's allowed by special use permit in every single base zoning district that we have except for CBD, Central Business District. Airport as defined in section 24, article one, which is the airport overlay district section of the zoning ordinance, simply defines it as the municipal airport, Murfreesboro, Tennessee, which is different from the regular definition of airport in our zoning ordinance. So this amendment proposes to allow the airport use as it's defined in the airport overlay district, i.e. the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport, by right within the boundaries of the airport overlay district. And the airport overlay district is the area that encompasses the city's airport and surrounds the city's airport. In other words, kind of the airspace, both the land and airspace that surrounds the city's airport. And for those of you that may not be familiar with the airport overlay district, the primary purpose of it is to, to limit building heights within that district so as not to interfere with air navigation. So the proposal is to add an end note to chart one that would allow the physical improvements at the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport by right rather than special use permit. This would not apply to any other airport within the city limits other than the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport because it specifies that this pertains to airports as defined in the airport overlay district definitions. So as an aside, there's already a number of different layers of review for the Murfreesboro Municipal Airport. So for example, city council must approve any new facilities on site. In addition, amendments to the airport master plan and the airport layout plan are considered by the planning commission from time to time when planned physical modifications to the city's airport are contemplated. And also, of course, the FAA has oversight over improvements at the airport as well. So really what this would do is it would allow improvements at the city's airport to go straight to the site plan review process and not be required to go to the Board of Zoning Appeals for a special use permit. So that's the proposed ordinance amendment in a nutshell. I'll be happy to answer any questions that you may have. We recommend a public hearing date of August the 7th if the planning commission concurs.
So Matthew, I've got one question. Don't have a problem with it not coming before the BCA, but you mentioned that it would go before the city council in all likelihood if a new building was going to be built. At the city council level, would there be a public hearing or not?
No, no, because it wouldn't be a land use matter. It would be a matter of the city council approving what is going on on the city's property, improvements on the city property. Mr. Tully, Mr. Hankins, am I articulating that correctly?
Yes, that's correct.
And the only reason why I ask that is I could imagine neighbors that are around the airport, if a building is going to be built next to them, that, that they may have input. That would be my only comment.
I think the, the airport master plan and the airport layout plan are still documents that would require a public hearing before planning commission. So if you recall back, Mr. Halliburton, I know you were on the planning commission back when the city was looking at extending the runway, gosh, probably 10, 12 years ago. And there was a, an extensive public input process during that time. So any amendments to the airport layout plan or airport master plan would go through that same, that same process.
At some point, it would have a public hearing, is what you're saying, mostly, at some level.
Yes, the airport master plan and the airport layout plan and amendments there too require a public hearing.
At planning commission?
Yes.
At planning commission?
So all you're doing is eliminating a special use permit then?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So the special use permit would provide a venue for, for public feedback on kind of a micro level on a, on, so I think what we're, what we're grappling with, just to give you some background, is, you know, we're seeing these, these buildings that, you know, could potentially be construed as accessory buildings. Do they rise to the level of requiring a special use permit? So we're kind of grappling with that. And so we're seeking to maybe clarify that and, and say, you know, considering the, the vast entirety of the, of the property, you know, adding a, you know, 4,000 square foot building, once you take, once you put it into context of the entire property, does that necessitate going before the Board of Zoning Appeals? Or are these other layers of scrutiny sufficient? And so, so we're, we're just proposing this as a, as a potential modification to the process.
Again, I don't have a problem with it. I just wanted to make sure that somewhere along the way, the public would have input if a new building was going to be built at this property. And it sounds like that is the case.
I think from, from a more of a macro standpoint, yes. So the, so the...
And Mr. Blomley and Mr. Halliburton too, I mean, if, if you also consider the new state law about public comment periods, any, any action that went before the city council would be an action item.
Okay.
So that somebody could sign up for the public comment period to speak on that action.
Okay.
So there, there will be some avenues still for the public to have.
Okay. And just to clarify, that the airport layout plan and the airport master plan are more macro documents that, whereas the BCA would be, you know, focusing in on a specific building. So the public would have opportunities in addition to what Mr. Hankins just mentioned for review of the more global plans for the airport.
Okay.
And that would be what the layout and master plans would be for.
Thank you.
Motion to schedule a public hearing August 7th.
Sorry.
Second.
Motion and a second. Ms. Jacob?
Ms. Everwater?
Aye.
Mr. Carroll?
Aye.
Vice Chair Halliburton?
Aye.
Mr. Harris?
Aye.
Mr. Prince?
Aye.
Chair Jones?
Aye. Okay, that concludes all of our new business currently. Did we have any other staff reports or other business today?
I have none.
Okay. If not, then we stand adjourned. Thank you.